The non-existent wall does not exist.
I think we can say the remnants of whatever snowball there was has, uh, no, it's no longer qualified.
Because it's a scenic room, they don't want to get tripped up by it.
You made the point with the plan, it just gets fishy to me why somebody wants something to be explained that's obvious.
Because of lawyers.
Seems like there's something going on there when you want me to tell you there's no wall.
You know, you have to watch out for those lawyers.
Yes, we do.
All right, so we're good? In that case, I think we can move on to our, oh, we've got two more things. One is the designation of the person who's going to be our liaison to the Capitol Committee. I believe in Cheryl's absence, she was voted unanimously to be that person.
You have a little bit.
But, um, so there's that, which we'll talk about in a second so we can get that done, and then let's talk a little bit about zoning. So for that, my understanding is it's one meet, you guys saw the email, so you can correct me if it's wrong, it's one meeting a month, that's 7:00 AM in the morning, not every month, sometimes, is that right, Bill?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I can probably do that, at least for the next few months.
No, definitely.
Second.
You don't want a leaderboard, all is in favor.
Aye.
Gosh, I should have asked if anybody else wanted to do that, okay. Yeah, so we're good. You know, Brian, if you, you know.
I was, I was, yeah, sorry, I already voted.
Well, I'm also the only one who doesn't already have a liaison position, so I think that's fair. Um, so zoning, so let me kick this off by saying, the real purpose of what we were doing this summer is to establish this idea of a process to do zoning that has not come to us, that we have to react to. So we've set up this idea of doing the public forums and work, of identifying zoning that we think may be something we want to explore, um, using the idea of public workshops to explore that zoning, using the ability for people to comment, both at the public workshops and online, to get feedback on the zoning that we've, that we're testing, and then coming to a decision about, you know, as we move forward to each successive town meeting, is the zoning that we're looking at appropriate and right in timing perspective for this town meeting, or does it belong to another one? So we've already pooled a couple of things. The large lot zoning isn't going forward for October, the institutional review is not going forward to October, the first round of public comments is closed, and we've got a few of them, not as many as I was hoping, but a few of them in our packet. We have comments from various board members, I submitted mine, I see Julia, by the way, pulled together mine, Cheryl's, and Alex's on a number into a single document for us, so thank you very much, Julia. There's some others going around that have been submitted, both by members of the public. I think I've got a few that I need to send to Tim for redistribution. So where we are now is we have, our final public workshop is on Monday, Brian and I are going to cover it from the board, Tim and Bill will be there, and Julia, I'm hoping you can be there, too. The format will be a little bit different, because there will be fewer zoning articles and fewer people, we're not going to do the breakout sessions we did before, we're going to present, for those of you who can't be there, if you can get sort of a couple of sentence summary of this is what my zoning is trying to accomplish, so we can present that, and then we're going to allow people to ask questions. Along with that, the second round of public comments online will open up, that will finish towards the end of September. Now, we're coming up against a couple of deadlines. Obviously, our public hearing is scheduled for September 10th, so we need to advertise that public hearing. So tonight is a good night for us to start thinking about, are there any other articles that the authors of the articles, at this point, want to pool? I would say that the authors of each article, the person, the person who is shepherding each article, should by the, by next Friday, make a final decision if there is one that they feel, given all the evidence, that they would like to pull, so that we're not advertising articles that we don't feel are ready yet. Now, if after Tuesday, you say, let's take signs, for example, I know signs want to go forward, Alex has given me some really thoughtful comments, Cheryl's given me some really thoughtful comments, I know a few have come in from the public, I know I've got a lot of work to do on signs, but I believe I can do that in time for our public hearing, especially with the comments that I've received, so I would keep that on. Lighting, I'm going back and forth on, I haven't made a decision at this point if I want the lighting to keep going, um, I'll have a look at the results that we received from the survey and from the comments, have a look at what comes up on Monday night, and then make a decision by Friday if I feel that it should be pulled. Otherwise, I think anything that people feel should keep going, should stay on until, until we get to that public hearing. Oh, that was the thing for Thayer, yeah. So I'm interested in tonight, your thoughts on the zoning that you've received, the chances that you've had to look at it, your thoughts on your own articles or on other people's articles, and just sort of, you know, are, is there anything that we feel that we want to pull, as a group want to pull now, or do we still want to leave it up to the authors who are looking through the public comments? I know you haven't had a chance to look at the surveys yet, so, Cheryl?
Yeah, just a question, if they're pulled now, are we really looking at it a year from now?
No, no, if they're pulled now, sorry, and that's a good question, we've got two options, we could take them forward in January, you know, put them forward in January, we will not have the luxury of putting forward drafts and then doing the reviews, it's going to have to be in final form for that first week in January, and that would go to May, and then the other option is if it's something that we think needs a lot of public work, we would take it forward to next October. So Tim and I were bouncing ideas back and forth as we were talking about the forum, and one possibility would be, you know, get up in front of, so the format I was thinking of for town meeting is that I would give up and give the process that we've been doing so far, and then each person who's been sort of in charge of the zoning would present, whichever ones of their zoning have made it through to town meeting, so, you know, we get to share the love a little bit of our hard work, and also, you know, the credit for our various hard work. But one possibility could be that I get up and say, okay, here's a process we did over the summer, here's what we looked at, here's the articles that survived and are in front of you tonight, so-and-so will be doing this, so-and-so will be doing that. For the other articles, we are still interested in bringing these forward, and we're going to do a public forum starting end of January, I hope to have a date at that point, and then we'll be looking at these, so that people see that there's a continuation between the work that we did over the summer and whatever we're presenting in January or next October. And if we have an idea, you know, if we feel that an article is this close, but isn't quite ready for October, then we can announce, hey, we were working on acts, and we think it'd be better brought forward to May because we want some additional comments, so, you know, there is that flexibility. I think the key has been the process, if we only go forward with one article for October, or two articles, or three, I'm fine with that, personally. I think that we can certainly say that we've been working with the public on this, and this is how we're continuing, that we're learning from the process. If we have our five articles that are already to go, I'm fine with that, too, so.
Another question or comment, I guess?
Yeah.
The nature of some of the comments that I received from board members, I think are legal, really out of my realm of being able to answer. Do we have adequate time for town council to review the legal questions? This is on the inclusionary zoning in particular.
Right, yeah.
And I have to double check that there's any of that same nature on the accessory dwelling unit, but, I just want to be mindful of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Comments that come, whether it's a good idea or not, I think, and also, I think there's more than need to read that we just got in the survey, but if it's a question of whether it's a good idea or not, I think, is that something that should be then debated on the floor of town meeting? You know, so, is that something then where the town meeting is either comfortable with some of the provisions or not, and then if not, do they send it back to the planning board for further study?
So I'll give you my personal view of that, and I would welcome everybody else's views of that. My view is if it goes in front of town meeting, we as a board have to be confident, doesn't have to be a 5-0 vote, but the majority of the board has to be confident that if town meeting votes in favor, that we are comfortable with the implications of that zoning. So, so that's question number one, is we want to, yeah, and it goes without saying, but for people who are listening in, I think that's important that we clarify that. Then the second question is the two-year rule, so if we bring it in front of town meeting, it's voted down, is it something that we're comfortable waiting another two years to bring back? And then there's substantially the same form and all of that, but if there is a topic that is near and dear to your heart, do you want to risk the two-year wait on doing that? So that, if a town meeting votes it down, so that's sort of the other question that comes in. One of my things, and the reason I'm frankly going back and forth on lighting, is although we've had a lot of zoning come in front of us where people talk about, oh, and the lighting will be dark sky compliant, it's certainly gone to the warrant committee, what does that mean? I think there's probably a larger public question, what does dark sky compliance mean? And, you know, I could see waiting to get more information out to the public, certainly in the first draft that went online, it was not just the model ordinance, but what each section of the model ordinance meant, and then I stripped that part out in order to come for a legal draft. So, I think the, the question of whether or not the public has sufficient understanding of what these mean is a good point, especially for some of the more complex zoning. I think the deliberation about whether or not it's a good idea should take place with us first. Not going to prick on you, Brian, but I am a little bit, is as I was reading your two zoning articles, I was thinking, well, I had a different understanding of how this would go, and my different understanding has implications for what we're trying to do, so I would want to clarify with all of us that we have an understanding of each. So I was going to say, you know, we'd certainly talk about some of that tonight, but if the 27th, if we're just, if we're looking at Thayer on the 27th, I would split the 27th between Thayer and a significant discussion of ones that are going forward. But if you feel, after looking at it over the weekend, that, you know, you see the comments, you see what we're getting from the public, you're looking at the amount of work you need to do to address it, if you're looking at things, no, I'm not getting as much public comment as I would like, I'm not, I'm concerned about some of the feedback I'm getting and the legal implications, and you want to pull it, again, I don't have an issue with that, I think we keep talking about it, because I don't think we're pulling that permanently, it's just pulling for October. To your legal point, Bill and Tim, have the articles gone to John Flynn yet for review? Okay, they should, maybe after the weekend, they should go out as soon as possible, because we will need his legal review on those, and they'll be in better format after we've had a chance to review the comments and make changes, so. And I have an email in to Ted Hayes, the Chair of the Warrant Committee, to say, when do you need me in to talk to you about where we are in the process and what we're doing? So, so that's sort of where I am, I'm looking forward to your comments, and, you know, if you have thoughts on how you want to proceed, or concerns about your articles, or, where are you going?
Well, I have some good news.
Okay.
On amplified sound, the building inspector has said, I don't want this to be a zoning article, and I said, that's dandy with me, and he said, it can be a general bylaw, though.
Okay.
And it seems to me that it's not a, it's, it's basically, a person calls the policeman, and the policeman comes, and if they can't have a normal conversation, the policeman goes next door and tells them to turn it down. I mean, it's, no one is going to measure ambient sound and then come, well, at least the building inspector isn't going to, unless he gets an assistant and the equipment. But establishing your ambient sound level and then figuring out, and ambient sound, of course, differs, but at night, it's less, so, the more noise, I mean, but you still have to establish what it is to, if you're going to do a decimal count.
So you're thinking you would move it?
My thinking is-
Out of October, and we?
Well, no, I, I, I mean, either that or just say, this is not a zoning bylaw, this is suggested as a-
A general bylaw.
A general bylaw, and, and see what people say at the public hearing.
That's a good way of doing that.
So, Emily?
Yes.
I just recall from the warrant committee where there was a citizens petition, and it was neighbors of Curry College, where they have music playing in their fields, and they have the lights on, and they rent the fields out to camps, and they have lots into sports clubs and what have you, and there, there's no limitations on the hours that that can be running, and the lights can be on, and people feel as if their complaints have gone nowhere, and so they, that was actually referred-
Yes.
-to the town to do something about. So I would hate to kind of just punt this to someone else, and neighbors feel as if nobody's going to address their concerns.
So here's, here's one of the legal questions for you, we can't actually regulate lighting for an institution, an educational institution, there was a recent, relatively recent decision for Gordon College, so towns do not have the ability to regulate athletic field lighting for educational institutions, now.
Do they consider a field an education use?
Well, yes, as a matter of fact, that was part of this. But I do have a question that I asked John Flynn, and I need to follow up with him on, because I think you were going to look into it, which is if the field is being rented to a non-educational use, say, a for-profit sports camp of some sort, then is the lighting able to be regulated? Now, my other question would be, and I don't know the answer to this, I was actually talking about somebody, with it somebody today, is if we can't regulate lighting, can we regulate sound for an institutional use? And that is a very appropriate question to ask.
Well, our dark sky compliant lighting is not going to matter if institutions can brighten the sky up with unlimited hours and put candles on.
I completely understand that, but I'm saying that because of the Dover Amendment, there are certain things that the town can't regulate now.
And the other thing is, I guess, if you say no music after nine, that may not work, it has to be music of a certain volume, that if you say no music of a certain volume after nine, and the problem, of course, is establishing what that volume is.
Well, we talk about noise with relationship to activities at a nursery as being detrimental to the one's ability to take pleasure in their home, right?
Yeah.
People came to the warrant committee and said that they have the same kind of difficulty with music activity on athletic fields, and being able to take it peaceful, you know, at their home, inside and out. So whatever, if the Dover Amendment exempts them from everything, I guess there's nothing we can do, but that sure would be good to make sure we get 100% certainty on that, so that if it does come up again, then the neighbors can be shown this is what the law is, and we can't do anything about it.
But, but we can, we can direct the lights down, I mean, it, it-
We can ask them to, but we cannot force them to that decision.
I, Tabor Academy has an athletic field, and they wanted to light it, and the ZBA said, no, can't do it. They have not been able to install lights on their athletic field.
That's interesting.
And so I think there's hope, Cheryl.
Go ahead, go ahead and state it.
Because of the article that came from Curry, Curry actually put together a plan that talks about the hours of use, the, some of the sound, they did, they have, there is a new lighting plan, there is a new sound plan, they didn't have to do it all, but they did, because they were trying to be a good neighbor, go and do, implement their own policies of what to do.
When did they do this? How recent is this?
Right after that, right after that article.
Okay, because I-
But there's a second part to this, and the second part to this is, if this is the road you really want to go down, be careful where you're going, because it doesn't just affect that one institution.
Right.
It's going to affect all of the other institutions in town that have the same issue. And when you look back at Milton Academy, Milton High School, look at back what they have and how they do their fields, it's, it's not that one is doing all of it, there's, there's plenty to pass around, so be careful what you're asking.
Well, and that's why, that's why I did not want to go forward with institutional review for October, because it is incre, as I started looking into it, it is incredibly complex, and we just simply didn't have the time, for one thing, we're going to have to talk to the institutions, so we did not have the time to go for that.
It's not one institution, it's all, and you're all into the same mix, and in that mix are several town institutions.
Well, and that becomes another thing, I was looking on the Mass Planners List serve, and it was talking, it was saying something about towns that actually require town buildings to be subject to zoning. So for example, when we were doing the school building project, all the schools would have come to the planning board for our site plan approval, and so some towns do that and some don't, so if you start looking at institutional review of some sort, do you include the town? And so there were a lot of questions about institutional review, which frankly, I was not, sorry?
Do you then have to start looking at every road?
Well, see, and streetscapes and stuff like that, so I was not ready to bring that to October, I'm sorry, it wasn't going to happen. So you're think, you're, you're wanting this to ask?
I think in general, let's put it on the warrant as a general bylaw, and see what the people say at the, at the public hearing, I mean, maybe we'll get some good ideas about an enforceable standard.
Okay.
That doesn't require, I mean, the building inspector has simply said he's not going to do it, and he's also said that when it happens at night, he's not even in town.
Well, that's another question that somebody I was talking to-
Whereas, whereas what I'm suggesting, if you call the policeman, and the policeman, you and he can't have a conversation at your door, that's prima facie evidence that the music's too loud.
And then the policeman tells them to turn it down?
And then he tells them to turn it down, and, and it ain't perfect, but it, it's, 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 it has, it has elements of interest.
I do think we need to be mindful that if we're putting a requirement on, for example, the nursery Thayer-
Yes.
-on noise nuisance, are, are there other noise nuisance instances that we're going to need to be addressing, and are we going to address them in a comparable manner? I guess that would be my concern.
Yeah, and originally, I was thinking, although I understand why Alex would choose to start with amplified music, originally, I was thinking that we would look to having a general bylaw that dealt with noise, because that question has come up before.
General noise bylaw?
A general noise bylaw, you know, when do, well, I thought that's where we looked at.
Like a general lighting bylaw.
But it's, it's, you know, when do contractors start work, because some communities do regulate this and others don't, they stay away from it, and, as, you know, that was another question that I had with the lighting bylaw, and with some of the language that I'd seen, and certainly true to the sign bylaw, is how much as a community do we want to regulate? Because you can get really, really, really specific, and you can stay really, really, really general, and, you know, how, how far down that road do we move as we look at these things? Which is why, starting with amplified music, wasn't a bad way at all of testing this.
It was, it was reactive, and reactive zoning isn't always bad zoning.
That is certainly true, so. So does anybody have any, yes?
I have another question, when did you say the public hearing would be on the post article?
September 10th.
And is there any disadvantage to advancing the ones we have, just to gauge the, how much public interest there is in them, and then decide? Can we decide to pull some after that?
We have to decide what we're pulling and not pulling, because on September 14th, our final language is due to the planning board.
Actually, August 26th is the date, because it has to be available when the ad goes into the newspaper.
But we can make, we can make changes based on the public hearing, that's what I'm saying.
After the public hearing, we can suggest a chair, but what goes into the warrant will be-
The 26th.
What's there on the 26th.
No, that is what I have gotten agreement on, what's there on the 26th, or actually, probably a little bit earlier.
It has to be what's in the warrant, because that's what's being advertised.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Let me finish.
I mean, you may have made a deal, but-
No, you know, yelling at me before I get a chance to speak. So what, because what has happened in the past is we have the public hearing, we have changes, and then there's all these green sheets floating around, and everybody has gotten upset with us because of the green sheets, even though this is how this often works, what goes into the warrant will be our final changes after the public hearing. But what we have our public hearing on is what is advertised, and I would say that what is advertised needs to be as close as possible to the final, because-
So another round of revision.
So you've got to ask Mr. Flynn, because I disagree with this legally, I don't think you can, you have to have, what goes into the warrant has to be what you have your public hearing on.
But we can have the recommendation be what the, the changes-
They can change it, they can change it, the recommendation can be what we recommend, but what goes into the warrant originally has to be what we have the hearing on.
I have, I have no objection to that.
Just so that we can determine if there have been material changes that weren't heard.
Yeah, as long as the rec, as, as long as, I'm fine with the article that goes into the warrant being what was advertised and what our public hearing is on, as long as the recommendations can be our tweaks after the public hearing, so we're not showing up with green pieces of paper, I am fine with that. I don't have an issue with that.
And if you can, and if you can convince the warrant committee, I mean, the warrant committee would have to decide that the planning board's recommended changes were what they wanted to do.
Right, exactly, well, we'd have, they may have some changes that then go in with it, but my point is, we don't have green sheets, or pink, or whatever the color's going to be this year, so, no, I don't have an issue, so that means-
The 26th.
No.
No.
Because it gets published on the 27th.
Oh.
Which means you have to typeset everything, so I would say your final language for what you want the public hearing to be on should be submitted on the 20th, is my guess.
Legal ads for zoning articles are due-
This month?
August.
We're talking a few days.
Just confirming.
Yeah, or next 20th.
The 24th of August, I have to have legal ads to the newspaper.
So when do you need it in order to set up the legal ads?
You've, you've got it, and, and you can say the article will be on file at the office of the town planner, but then it has to be on file when the ad hits the, hits the street, not when the ad is put, is contracted.
When the ad hits the street, it's the final.
When it hits the street and someone comes in and says, I want to see these things.
So, okay, so that's why you were saying the 26th.
Right.
Okay, all right, so the 26th, all final, final language for the public hearing is due to Tim on the 26th. Which means if you have comments on other people's stuff, get them in now.
Right.
I know what I'm doing this weekend, so, but it would be helpful to know before then, if you've decided that you want to pull an article, yes?
No, the 24th, you keep saying 26th, but it is the 24th.
24th for what?
We need the, we need the language for the ad.
That's the Thursday?
Yes, that's a Monday, that's a Monday for the Thursday, which is the 27th.
Are you, yeah, but my question is, are you putting in, you're not doing an ad with all of the language, because if you did that, you'd have the sign, uh-
On paper.
Bylaw would be on paper.
They're on paper.
Yeah, you'll have to, the mill time will go bankrupt.
You need a sufficient-
I didn't do it, Sue had to do it.
You need a sufficient understanding of what it's going to be, so maybe when you submit your final stuff, a nice paragraph on what we're trying to do would be useful, or at least enough information to Tim, so he, and Julia and Phil should write it, so, okay, good.
So I'm trying to go on vacation, I do want until the 26th.
Well, you've got to look at your zoning and see which ones you want to pull.
I'm going to put this in the summer vacation schedule.
Well, that's why this, and again, I want to, I do want to stress this, look, we've got next May, we've got next October, the summer was really about starting the process, finding out how it works or doesn't work. I will say that I had hoped that we would get more public comments online than we did. I knew that our participation in the meetings would be lower than we'd want, because hello, summer, but I'd hope that we get, now, we did get quite a few responses to the survey, what was the final number, do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I do remember from the survey summary that printed out.
Uh-huh.
331 complete responses and 424, 331 complete responses and 424 partial responses.
Okay.
Just to make sure we lean towards the microphone.
Yes. So for the summer, that's not bad?
Right.
At all?
And I think that, as a learning experience, even though it was an exceptionally long survey, 331 complete responses in a month, that's very good, so, you know, next time around, we can sort of tweak it in ways that maybe we can increase that. And also, I mean, you know, we, we got not very many at all, like, kind of law-form written comments, whether that's a function of how, how it was publicized, and how people knew about it or didn't know about, or people's just sort of reluctance to put their ideas to paper, I don't know. So, it is a learning experience, I'll have a lot more stuff to say about if we do a postmortem.
Which I think we do, I think we're learning some important lessons about public outreach, and how we structure these, and all of that, so, that's where we are. So if you know that you want to pull an article between now and, say, next Friday, that'd be good, otherwise, the final language for the public hearing, and on, on the 27th, we will do a full discussion of what's submitted.
So, one question I had before we all leave is, so 333 Brush Hill, we are going to open and then immediately continue.
Yep.
Do, do you anticipate continuing that to September 10th?
I would prefer not to, if we can, just because I think, you know, we may end, well, it depends, if we know on the 27th that we have three articles, we can continue it to the 10th, if we know that we have five, then we might not want to, so, we might, we might ask them to, what they're looking for, I mean, they've been fairly relaxed about timing so far, so, but I assume at some point they'll want to get moving, so.
They're getting dangerously close to missing. The stormwater has issues, and that area, the stormwater report was delivered to us today.
Right.
It was mailed to the peer reviewer today, so she won't get it till tomorrow, but she's on vacation.
Right.
And she won't be back until the 30th.
So it's unlikely that we're going to have something for the time of the 10th anyway?
We're not going to have it for the 27th. We're not going to have it for the 27th.
Then I think 10th, we should preserve as a zoning discussion.
Or perhaps do it at the second go-round in September. I think we should just continue it to the, whatever it is, 20th of September.
24th.
Fourth.
Yeah. Anything else?
Move, we adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? All right.